Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb? Mark Ham? Glenn Lewis?
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a letter of commendation for Rachel Thomas, and I would like to read this if I could. Letter of commendation presented to Rachel Thomas, dated as the 6th day of March 2023. This is the Moore City Council would like to take this opportunity to commend Rachel Thomas for her actions while inspecting the new Public Works Building. During the inspection, Rachel smelled gas from a line and heard of the hissing of the gas escaping into the workplace. She immediately notified the risk manager and mitigation team, and action was taken. The swift action ensued of the safety of our citizens and the employees as well, and will have saved the city from potential countless dollars of property damage. The City of Moore is proud to employ such a dedicated individual and would like to have the honor, would like to honor Rachel Thomas for her exceptional conduct during the inspection. She is and continues to be a valuable asset to the risk management, the legal department, and the City of Moore.
Come on down.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Rachel, would you like to say something?
Would you like to say a few words?
Oh, they want to take a picture. You're gonna fake it again.
Yeah, so she...
No more equipment if you don't say anything. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two is a consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held February 21st, 2023. Item B is approve the payment to Cleveland County Assessor in the amount of $41,628.46 for the visual inspection program. Item C is accept a 20-foot public water line easement from the Moore School System to serve the Highland East Junior High located in the northwest corner of Section 24 Township 10 North, Range 3 West. Item D is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2022-2023 in the amount of $6,387,735.21.
Most approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. It is a consent docket. Any other discussion from council? If not, would you call for the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider approval of an agreement with Meachack and Associates in the amount of $51,841 for professional engineering services for designing the Chestnut Avenue Northwest First Street to Northwest Second Street project.
Mayor and council, this project will include the one block of Chestnut from first to second, and it'll include designing the existing street to address some of the drainage problems in that area and take the drainages over to the I-35 service road. And we would recommend that you approve the contract with Meachack and Associates.
Okay. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, council? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider approval of an agreement between Benham Designs LLC in the amount of $162,495.44 for professional engineering services for the design of the Southwest 34th Street and I-35 Waterline Crossing Project.
Mayor and council, this project will consist of designing the 24-inch water line that will begin at the west connector of 34th Street and cross underneath I-35 and tie into the 12-inch adjacent to the new library, or the new animal shelter. And we'd recommend that you approve the project.
Is that the primary thing it's gonna service?
Well, yes, it's gonna serve it, it's gonna help with the fire flows with the animal shelter, but it's also gonna create that second crossing between east and west of the Interstate 35 and help the overall system.
Okay. Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second? Any other questions from council? Or comments? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Okay, item number five is consider approval, addendum number one with EST incorporated in the amount of $43,010 for the additional surveying, utility location services, and design services for the Broadway Avenue and the Eastern Avenue widening projects.
Mayor and council, the reason for this addendum is the original design contract basically covered a corridor near the right, within the right-of-way essentially, of Eastern Avenue and Broadway for the connection of those two projects and the widening. After we got into the project, and if you recall, EST came and gave presentations, and we chose two intersections, the one at Broadway and 19th. In fact, there will be two separate lights at that location. We'll be closing Linda Lane, and so we needed some additional, they did not, their original scope did not include surveying or locating all the utilities outside of that area that we're now going to need to have the information on, as well as the intersection of Eastern and Broadway has that offset roundabout, and that gets outside the original corridor that we were looking at to do the design. So the cost of the amendment is for the utility, locating the utilities and doing the surveying outside those areas that we didn't incorporate in the original.
Okay, thank you.
Most, go ahead, sorry. Motion to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion from council? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider authorizing staff to enter into contract negotiations with Olson for a public transportation study.
Mayor and council, there were two proposals received after interviews. The staff recommends that Olson be selected for this project. Kevin Bloss is here with Olson to answer any questions if need be.
And this is the transportation study that we're doing for bus service and all that?
Yes, yes.
Perfect. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second? Any other discussion from council? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider accepting the donation of four, and I'm not sure how to say this.
Tech Ball.
Tables from Tech Ball USA LLC to be located and maintained in the Buck Thomas Park, Central Park, and Feral Park for the sole purpose of development of the tech ball sport in the City of Moore.
Mayor and council, this donation is to provide an additional activity at the locations listed. Although it is basically a new game called Tech Ball, the fundamentals of the game is using soccer skills and will assist participants in increasing their abilities in the sport of soccer. Recommend approval.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion, oh.
Is there any maintenance or upkeep on these?
These are weather-resistant tables, and there should be very little.
Okay, all right, very good. Go ahead.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second? Any other discussion from council on these items? On this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider approval of agreement with TAP Architecture for architectural services at City Hall.
Mayor and council, this is a proposal with TAP for them to come in and give some ideas on how to better utilize some of the space at City Hall. Recommend approval.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion from council? If not, would you call for the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider approval of a budgeted annual maintenance agreement with Motorola Solutions in the amount of $46,455.67 for radio console system in the 911 and emergency operations center.
Mayor and council, good evening. This is the annual contract for maintenance on our dispatch and EOC radio consoles. It is a budgeted item.
Motion to approve.
How often do we change out those systems?
Actually, we, the current system, we put in when we moved into the new facility.
So that's...
They last nine, 10 years at least.
Okay, all right, very good. Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second? Any other discussion from council? If not, would you call for the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Galen, you just received some big award, correct? From the...
I was honored with a lifetime contribution award to, from our State Emergency Management Association.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
It just shows that I'm getting old.
Okay, item number 10 is consider adopting resolution number 2022, ratifying the new schedule of fees and charges previously approved by the Moore Public Works Authority on February 21st, 2023.
Mayor and council, this is simply the fee schedule that was approved last time. Needs to be ratified by city council. Recommend approval.
Most to approve?
Second.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second? Any other discussion from council? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 13, or excuse me, item number 11 is consider authorizing the budget purchases of 13 Harris XL, S, or excuse me, XL 95 portable radios and accessories from L3 Harris for $40,427.40 using Southwest Contract, or excuse me, Sourcewell Contract for number 042021.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a continuation of replacing our 2006 radios that we got in 2006. So we're just every year, just chipping away at replacing all the old radios that are no longer serviceable and purchasing new, up-to-date equipment.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second? Any other discussion from council? If not, would you call for the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number 12 is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting of February 21st, 2023. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2022-2023 in the amount of $1,316,417.72.
Most to approve?
Second.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion and a second? Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number 13 is a consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held February 21st, 2023. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2022-2023 in the amount of $145,297.19.
Most to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number 14 is Citizens for Item Not on the Agenda. And we have a couple citizens signed up. Mr. Williams, Barry Williams?
Barry Williams, 1061 Northwest Sixth Street, Moore, Oklahoma. It's entitled More Strong, More Fit. We're building a $6.6 million expansion to the station right now. It costs a family $660 per year for a family pass, and I'd like to make a proposal. Right now, we have approximately 4,344 annual passes. That's both family and individual passes. The City of Moore employees get a discount, the Moore Public Schools gets, employees get a discount, seniors get a discount, military members get a discount. None of those are on the fees, because I looked. I had them send it to me. The City of Moore is taking in approximately $140,000 per month, or about $1.68 million a year. According to the oklahoma.gov website, the adult population across the nation has an obesity rate of 31.9%. Oklahoma has a 36.4% of adults that are obese. And additionally, Oklahoma's children ages range 10 to 17 have an obesity rate of 32.3%, and the national average is 32.1%. So my consideration is to charge more residents a $15 per month health charge and allow the residents to take part in getting fit at the station instead of charging just a few people, have everybody pay, and everybody be able to use the facilities. This will help people reduce the chance of getting type 2 diabetes, certain cancers, digestive problems, sleep apnea, heart disease, osteoarthritis, and many more. If we really want to help out the Moore residents, let's get them fit, let's get them healthy. Based on $15 a month on approximately 23,500 homes, we would take in $352,530 a month, or $4.2 million a year, to help with the station and with the expenses instead of just a few people in Moore. So I'd like to at least consider doing something of that sort where everybody can use the station at a reasonable rate. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Okay, the next person signed up is... Patrice Williams?
I was out and have been for years during ball season at Buck Thomas Park. There's a sign going in that says we have a city ordinance to park in designated spots. I could barely get my car through certain areas because of illegal parking. If I can get my car, can't get my car through, they can't get an ambulance through. If these kids get hurt, they can't get there. A fire truck can't get there. It's scary to me, and it's been going on for years. And this tournament seems the worst I've seen it in a while. People don't want to walk, then don't go. Yeah, it's what it seems to me.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Because there's plenty of parking, they just don't want to walk.
Is there adamant, there's parking elsewhere, but they don't, there's parking illegally?
Yeah, there could be some more.
Okay.
But there could be more parking out there. But they're not using the parking that's furthest away from the park.
Okay.
We need to get tow trucks out there, something, and start just towing them. They might learn, because they'll announce it at the ballpark, but...
Nobody moves.
It doesn't do any good. Somebody else will come. But if we start doing something, then they might say, oh, whoa, we better not park here anymore. Because they're not announcing it, just go out there and start towing, writing $500 tickets. I mean, make it hurt. My grandson plays out there. I have two granddaughters that play out there. A ball hits them in the face, or something happened, they couldn't get there. And it's very scary to me. It's very, you know, it's scary. And I don't know what to do. What do we do? We tell the director of the tournament, makes an announcement? Do we call the non-emergency police number? What, you know? At Moore High School, when they have stuff, the police are out there towing or writing tickets if they're not parked where they should be, and as they should. I'm not complaining about that. But we've got to do something. It's scary. And can I say one more thing? It's a kudos, it's not a complaint.
Sure.
I've been going to the Citizens Police Academy. I went on my ride-along Friday night that I have to go to graduate. I am so impressed with our police officers. I think Chief Gibson is hiring the best of the best. The things they have to deal with on a daily basis, they do a lot more than write tickets, put people in jail. You know, they do, the things they have to see. I don't know how they get through it daily. I don't know how any of them do it daily. But I think our chief is amazing, and I think we have amazing officers.
Thank you.
Thank you. We concur.
So, Brooks, you'll look into that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, thank you. Any items from the city council?
Is anybody else that wants to speak?
Anybody else that wanted to speak? That's not signed up?
Anything from the city council? Anything from the city manager?
Just, I would also like to extend congratulations to Galen. I know he's been a big part of the emergency management community for a number of years, and job well done.
All right. Item number 15 is executive session. Section 307 Title 25 Oklahoma Statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss considering if deemed appropriate, take possible action regarding pending case number CJ 2023-119 filed in Cleveland County by Joe Carson on behalf of Teresa Manning against the City of Moore and authorize, and authorization, excuse me, for legal counsel and staff to take actions as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city as authorized by 25 Oklahoma Statutes 307B-4. Item B is discuss and consider the acquisition of permanent right-of-way and utility easements from the Moore Public Schools for property located south of Fourth Street and east of the railroad tracks related to the construction and maintenance of the Southeast Fourth Street Road Underpass Project and authorize the staff to proceed as directed in executive session as authorized by 25 Oklahoma Statutes 307B-3. We have a motion for...
Make a motion that we convene the executive session?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second? Would you call for the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, we convened executive session. Okay, we'll be back shortly.